You are watching Access Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next, there'll be a December 6th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by going to www dot access Lapeur County dot org.
Good evening. Today is December 6th and this is, I'm calling to order a workshop for our redistricting. Every, after the census, every 10 years, there's a process where we have to equalize our wards and this is the first of two workshops. We haven't determined the second date yet because I knew that there would be some council members that wouldn't be able to attend tonight. And all of the council members received an email with several different versions of some maps and a little bit about the, the numbers for each of the ward maps as far as the population. And what we're gonna do, I know we're waiting on some additional printouts with additional information, but we have with us in attendance online, Kelsey Kaufman. Kelsey, I'm gonna have you introduce yourself and kind of explain what your role is in the process and what you do for local communities in Indiana along this process and just give a little bit, bit of background of how long you've been doing this and who other communities you do this for. I think you're on mute.
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. So my name is Kelsey Kaufman and 12 years ago, I was teaching a course at DePaul University and my students stumbled upon the information that most local governments in Indiana hadn't redistricted in decades. That that was less true of municipalities than it was of counties and school boards, but it was true really across the board. And so we started a very ambitious effort to figure out how widespread the problem was and to document the problem. So we created a website called indiana local redistricting dot com. And the original version of that was for all 92 counties showing their maps and their population deviations and whether their districts were compact and contiguous. In other words, whether they met all of the requirements for a properly districted council. That led to a lot of debate in the early 2010s about whether or not counties were required. Some people were saying that they weren't required, but it was absolutely clear in the statutes and in the constitution and in court cases that all local governments that have what are called single member electoral districts are required to redistrict in Indiana. Counties and school boards were required to redistrict last year and then the municipalities this year. And a lot of the counties did redistrict in the middle of the 2010s in response to our website. And then starting last year, we picked the project up again and started tracking what was happening with counties and with school boards and crucially offering our services to, to draw their maps for them. There are quite a lot of, of local governments in Indiana that have paid very large amounts to law firms to redistrict their communities. And we realized that redistricting of the congressional and legislative levels is very complicated, but at local levels, it's really not. And so we offer our service free of charge to any local government in the state of Indiana that we will help you draw your maps. And crucially, that is getting feedback from you. None of us are from, for example, from Michigan City. So you know, we need feedback as to, as to what you want, which is why we try to create a lot of maps. I should also tell you that I'm a little bit worn out today because today Michigan City, Maryville, Lake Station and East Chicago have all been working with, with me on their maps today. So if I confuse you with other cities, please forgive me. So that's, that's kind of where we are, you know, that, that we track local governments in a way that nobody else does in the state and assist them, I think, in ways that nobody else does in the state.
Can you also, because we talked about, a little bit about prison populations across in other places and in some of the reasons why some areas have kept them or whether it's at a state or federal level versus a local level?
Yeah. So at, at the federal level and congressional redistricting prisons are just a drop in the bucket. They really don't make a great deal of difference. In state legislative races, it can affect them. The populations can be up to about 6% in a county like Lapeur that has several prisons. But at, at the local level, it can make a huge difference. And the example everybody likes to use is Anamosa, Iowa, where 98% of one of their city council districts is prisoners. And in my own county here in Putnam County, one of our school board districts used to be 70% prisoners. And the school board then switched to a different system so that they didn't have to, have to do, have single member electoral districts. And but as a result, a little more than half of Indiana local governments that have large state prisons or federal prisons in them now don't count the people who are in the prison when they're doing their redistricting. And one of the things I always like to say to people who might not have thought about the issue very much, that the rationale is that people in prison are there involuntarily, often temporarily being switched from different prison to different prison and they can't vote. And they almost always are not from your local community. So in the South Putnam School Board example, there was nobody in the Putnamville State Prison of the 2,000 prisoners, you know, who was from South Putnam. And because they constitute such a large number in a small local government setting that many of the communities choose not to count them, you know, a good example is in Vigo County, Terre Haute has three federal prisons and it's not possible to divide them up because they're kind of in a little teardrop at the southwestern end of, of Terre Haute. And so Terre Haute, Vigo County, I think it's Perry County, you know, a lot of them don't count the, the people in prison, you know, and it's entirely the council's decision on this. You know, we, we don't advise one way or the other. But I will say on Michigan City, that your ward that has the penitentiary in it with the, on April 1st, 2020, there were 2,305 men who were there. And that's about 44% of Ward Number Three, which means that there are only half as many free residents in that ward as there are in your other wards. And what that means is that you're, you know, well, let me just step back a minute. That, that the people in prison actually don't care about whether you count them or not. It doesn't, they're not involved in local government. So we look at it in terms of how does that dilute the electoral equality of free residents who don't happen to live in the ward that has the prison? And so that's kind of, you know, our way of approaching. You know, we, and so most of the maps that we drew for you this time were ones that didn't include the people in prison.
Thank you for the explanation. Before we move forward with the actual questions on the maps, do you, anyone have any questions for Ms. Kaufman?
Yes. I just have one in regards to those that are in prison. You said that for the majority of the prisons, they're not from the actual cities. For example, for Michigan City, since we have Indiana State Prison and majority are not locally, local residents, but when they are released. But they say they remain here in Michigan City. So is there any way that we could give us statistics to see approximately about how many of those that are released?
Not, not released.
Well, once they're, once they're, once they're out, they remain in Michigan City.
Some do. And we don't know that though.
Reason why I say that, because from the aspect of where I work, we look at that as well as far as our statistics for child support. And what we have come to see is that a lot of those that are incarcerated remain in Michigan City. They don't go back to majority we have from Illinois or Ohio, things of that. They, they stay here. So is that factor in anywhere?
This is based on the census, which is every 10 years. So I don't know. So I, I guess in turn over a 10-year period, they will be included, but you wouldn't be able to really tell unless they self-identify some kind of way to tell us that they stayed after they got out of prison. I don't, I'm not sure if there's a way to do that, Attorney Harris.
There's not. If this is just gonna capture whatever the results of the census data is, and that's the only data point that's being used. Yep.
All right. Any other question? Yes, Councilman Brian?
Yeah, real quick. Now you said these maps were drawn, not including that population. What about the history of Michigan City? What about the last ones? Were those drawn, including the prison population?
Yeah, the last one had the prison population.
Okay, so it's gonna be switching up here.
And she said that approximately 44% of Ward Three included the prisoners. That's, that's a high number.
I wondered if the map was drawn that way.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, did you get those printed? Are they printing?
It didn't.
It didn't come through? Okay. Well, we have it, we have it for the screen. So if, if it comes through, I sent it, but I hopefully I'll resend it again. Let me see. So if you can put that up on the screen. Ms. Kaufman sent us a, a, a bigger newer version so we can share it on the screen, some of the different maps. So one of the things that I asked for was a definition. And again, she said she, she did, she did a lot of ma, different maps so that we have several options. But one of the things I asked her for was the deviation, what that definition was. And basically, and I'm just gonna read it, "Population deviation is used by the courts to measure the degree of inequality among all the districts. It is calculated by subtracting the smallest district from the largest and dividing the average size of, size of all districts." So the lower the deviation, the closer the populations are for all of the wards. So, but one of the things that each council person will need to, to take a look at when they're looking at these wards specifically is I looked at not just the deviation, but also the geographic, what the geography looks like as far as it is a lot of zigzags, is it all adjacent? And, and what that looks like, because you'll see that there are, I think, eight, eight different options that have been given to us for, for the purpose of this, this exercise. I will say too though, that I just, just actually gave, was given the information from Ms. Kaufman right before Thanksgiving. So this, this is why the short turnaround. I, I hadn't received any information and I gave it to our attorney and he followed up with her and that's how we got in touch with Ms. Kaufman. I believe that you said you may have reached out to someone earlier in the year, but I think it just may have gotten lost in the spam or something. Not sure. So if each one of these, I guess we can just go through each one, just to kind of talk about what they, what they are. And Gail is getting us a copy. Go to the next, the next slide. So in your, in your packets, you'll see the first one is MCP2. And what I think we'll need is a, a large version of our existing that everybody can get, like a big one of our existing map. I'm Attorney Harris. And then whatever we, if we want to narrow these down and get bigger maps, because it's gonna be harder to see if we don't have a side-by-side comparison of what's existing versus what has changed.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think my hope was in the process of kind of just discussing this generally about the process is and how that works. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that we kind of at least start heading in a certain direction so that we can possibly do an overlay of what the existing maps look like with what we're considering as a, as a body for some of these changes. So I think this conversation will be helpful because there's a lot of options right now.
Is that something that can be done, Ms. Kaufman? With the existing map, some kind of way to do an overlay or not? Do you know? Or is that something we have to do?
Just gonna have to do a side-by-side comparison.
Okay. Or, or is that something we would have to ask the county GIS person to try to do? Possibly.
I can look into that.
Okay.
Find out if they can, but if side-by-side is kind of easier and more convenient for a Miss Kaufman's purpose, that's fine.
Okay. So, so the first one, the one, so there were several different options. For the sake of the ordinance, I just selected one and stuck it in there. It was not, I just picked one that was in the threes, that everything was kind of contiguous to one another. And that was this MCP2. And you can look at each one of them and see the populations. So when it has, the NP means no prison. That's because I had to ask that question too. So MCP2 means no prison. And it just, so when you look at the, the population, the deviation between the, the five, the six wards, you can see is very minimal. I think the highest population is 5,055. The lowest population is 4,868. So this map, again, is a three, a 3.77 deviation, but I think we're gonna need exploded maps for you all to be able to digest this over the next two weeks and, and then a follow-up workshop. And, and then if you go to some of the other ones, you can see that is, if you go to the next slide, MCP, what is the next one?
The next slide actually goes to Ward One and looks at a breakdown of Ward One.
Okay, so let's look at Ward One. This is, it's starting, I guess for this one, it breaks the wards down.
That's right. This is more information than what you, what was distributed.
Oh, okay.
Adds a little bit more information.
Can, can you go to the next slide? Okay. Oh, okay. I see what it is. So it just breaks it down. So we need to have those.
Yeah. We, we added those extra slides, Andy, because, so that it would show you where, if there's a precinct split, it would show you exactly where the precinct split is. Just in case it was hard to see on the original map, on the larger map.
Okay.
And Gail's printing that out for all of you too, just so you have it. But this, it's not different from what is included in your packet. It's just some additional information so you can see it a little clearer by precincts.
Okay. All right. And that, and that's what this, that, that presentation, but it didn't do it for all the versions.
Not for all the versions. This is this version.
Okay. So, okay. So this is the MCP, the MCP.
Two, two.
Two, yeah. Yeah. So it breaks it all the way out so that you can see.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can go through. Let, leave that one right there. Go back, still go back there. So Brian, I know that you're looking at it. Because it looks like there are some changes, but when you look at the, the overall map of this particular one from overview, everything is contiguous still. There's that, not a, everything on in Ward Three is towards the west. Ward One is towards the north. Councilman Paul is in central around the hospital. It's still kind of similar. That's the only reason why I picked this one because it seemed the most similar with the least deviation. But again, you can go to the next one, go to the next ward, the second ward. The second ward.
So there are several precincts that are broken down before you get to the second ward. So you know, there's three slides before you get to Ward Two.
Oh, well, we need to go to Ward Two. Keep going.
Yeah.
Because the precincts for us aren't as important as the wards. So Ward Two, again, once we get, get the document, it appears that all of the wards would change in some capacity if we even out. Can I ask the question, Ms. Kaufman, do you know if with the census, if there was any significant increases in any particular area? Like, you know, from where we, we exist now within the number of people in our wards? If we just left everything as is, did you do like a, a comparison of if everything was left today as it is, how many people were, would be in those wards?
No, but I can find that. Oh, you mean, yes, I can. Let's see if everyone was left as it is. Hold on just a second. Let me see if, so your populations right now are Ward One, 5,320. Ward Two, 5,003. Ward Four, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ward, Ward Two, 5,003. Ward Three, 5,248. If you count the men in the prison, 2,648. If you don't.
What is it, what is it without, without the prisoners?
Two, 2,648.
Okay.
Ward Four is 5,675. Ward Five is 5,160 and Ward Six is 5,660. So they're, they're, they're reasonably close other than, than Ward Three.
Okay. So that would basically the range currently today, if we left everything as is, it will be 2,648 in Ward Three and the highest would be 5,675.
That's correct.
In Ward Four. Okay.
So if you don't count the prisoners, then the population deviation is 62%. The maximum allowable is 10%. And if you do count the prisoners, then it's about 15%.
So it's still not even under the allowable?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I don't think we need this right now. So you gotta stop sharing that because I think we have the overall. So basically what I wanted to do and make sure everybody had in your, in your mailboxes were the actual map. So the current map, as you can see in the first page of your document, shows our existing wards and she just gave us the numbers for those. And geographically, again, you see that everything is contiguous. The new map with the prison population, if you turn the page, if we leave the, the prison population in, we still would have variations in the map. Even with the prison population included. There still would be changes in, in the wards. Only slight, but still nonetheless, there would be changes that would be made. And again, Ward Three with inmates would account for about 44% of that population. So I wanted to make sure that you all had, had that information. So the first one in the packet, the MCP1, that had a 6.17 deviation. Again, it's contiguous, but you can see that there's several, several jogs in that map and the MCP1 that you have in your, in your package. The sixth ward would, would jog into some of the fifth ward. And the same with the fourth and the third. They will be splitting out quite a, quite a bit in the MCP1. And that deviation is a 6.17. So there is some irregularities as far as some of the non-contiguous areas. And then when you go to NCP2, which is the one I included in the, in the ordinance, again, you will see this is without the prison. But the populations are pretty close. And the third ward, actually what happens is the third ward really becomes, takes part of the first and the second ward in that map, in the MCP2, when you, when you look at it. Because you can see the density, when you look at the wards, the most dense ward is the second ward and in the fourth ward. They have probably have the most density. They're smaller geographically, but they still have the population in that smaller area in the, the second and the fourth wards. High level of MCP3. This has a 6.35 deviation and I'm just going through them just very broadly. But that map, if you look at it, it, it is all over the place. It, it changes very dramatically, the wards. If you look at the green area and Ms. Kaufman, MCP3, is that green? That green area? What ward is that? Is that?
That's, well, we, we labeled it as three.
I can't see it.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I muted? No. So there, there should be a, it's showing you which districts up in the.
Oh, I see it now. Yeah, I'm sorry. So that changes the third ward dramatically. That's probably one of the most drastic maps of all of the maps, the MCP3.
I'll have that.
No, no, MCP3 is not in there?
You've got two and then it says Ward One. In your, in your original pack.
In your original pack.
I'll have original, yeah.
They were all in your mailbox? You don't, you don't have it?
I'll have with me.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Here's one. No, he can have this one. They can have that. So the MC, the MCP3, and I don't know if everybody would, would agree, but that one is probably the most extreme, one of the most extreme maps. Where basically all of the first ward becomes the, the, the third ward. The, all the, all the, basically all the wards are, are changed in that one. So I didn't even, I didn't give any thought to it. I just said, okay, it's what it is. So MCP3 and MCP4 are both like that. So I, in mind, I had already discarded those two, but I wanted to make sure that everybody saw those because those are extreme versions of where we're at today. And then you go to MCP5 and this one is still. And then you go to MCP five and this one is still contiguous. But when you look at, um, the, these colors are, are just. To something else, uh, yes, the map lines, when you look at MC MP five, this is another one. That, um, they're all contiguous, but all of the wards change dramatically. You could look at the sixth ward. The licks, the sixth ward takes on the whole entire, um. Lakefront part of the first ward, um, the, the actual. Second ward, um. Moves over to the, to the, the east and the west, but then this brown one, which is the first ward. It is like, uh, looks like it's an L shape type of. It, it, it's a dramatic changes well. So the further we get into the maps, the more dramatic they got. Um, as far as, um, what they looked like, so. Um, I know some of you are just seeing this, you know, really looking at this for the first time, so, um. The other one that I want to highlight though, that, um, has the least deviation is MC NP seven. And MC MP seven is, um, a two point nine three deviation. Um, pretty contiguous, but again, the fifth ward, um. Is, um, very, uh, is jogged and, and not contiguous. And one thing that, um, Ms. Kaufman did ask for was all of our addresses to make sure that. No person would be, um. Um, highlighted or removed from their ward if they're in whatever particular ward they're in. And Councilman Mac, prior to you getting here, the, um, forty-four percent. Of your population is the prison population, um, that we, uh, share. So the one with the least deviation, um, is, is Ward map MCP seven. And you will see that the, the lowest amount of population in any war is four thousand eight hundred and seventy. And the highest is fifty fifteen. So there's a, a short, a smaller deviation than all the other maps. Um, that is the smallest, or one of the smallest. And the last one MCP eight is a two point oh six, which even gets closer. That is the closest map. Um, MC NP eight, so what I did is picked one that was kind of in the middle. Just for the sake of picking something. So, um, what we will need to do before. Um, we'll have another workshop, but again, we will get the existing map blown up. And my question, um, will be to the council, um, what would you like to see? Um, should we look at the ones with the, the lowest deviations, take half of these? The ones that are the most contiguous and get those blown up, cause. Some of them just are very, are pretty extreme, but there's some that, um. With these lower deviations that seem more manageable than the others. Um, so I'm just looking for some direction on, um. What you would like to see for another, yes, Councilman Paul?
Well, after being on a, a console for, I think, uh. Two, two, uh, one or two of these, uh. Uh, map changes prior in the nineties and then in, uh. Two thousand, that, uh, we always looked at doing something with the least deviation. So we're not, um, alienating. The, uh. Voters in, in their precincts and I think that when we look at the map. Um, personally, I think that. Uh, number eight. It, it, it looks more contingent contiguous to me. Would, and you have the least deviation, so. I, I just think it's more settling, you know, for the average citizen. But with, with that, I think that we, we, uh, we definitely need to look at maps. Of the city with street names on it and also what, uh, voter registration. Is gonna do or. Uh, I mean, I, I don't know the, the, uh. All the mechanics to this or what the, uh, voter. Right, not voter registration, but the, uh, board, the county board. What they're gonna say about the map, if it's gonna cause a, a big changeover in the primary election. On where they have to reassign precincts. So I think there's more things to consider than just, uh, the deviation in the map. And, uh. In prior, prior maps. We didn't, we didn't necessarily, you know, the. Prison population was, wasn't, uh, a big. A big issue when we, uh, redrew the, uh, lines and some of the wards. The issue was trying to keep the wards. You know, and that, I understand that population numbers there is trying to keep them. Compact. For the individual voters. I think that's a main thing that we have to consider so that these people. You know, we got. We surely don't want to do something and have alienate more voters. We want to make it so. They're comfortable where, where they're going and, uh, we're trying to produce more voter turnout.
Right.
That, that's what I'm looking at with these maps, you know? And I appreciate the fact that you gave our addresses. To the, uh. Uh, lady that is doing this, uh, research. And I don't see it, and to me, personally, I think that map eight. With lines. Looks the most settling to me. If you look at, without even having it overlaid on a map with street name, no, uh, names on it. Um. Cause I think. At looking at all the maps, the, the deviation and, and, uh. We need to look at that couple of these maps that you have Ward six going. Across Michigan Boulevard down into, uh, um. I think that's MC. P one. Is the one I'm looking at and then it has a little D, uh, a little cutout. I believe that's Ward five. So I think that these maps, we need to put them on a, on a, uh, some kind of overlay with the. Uh, wards on them and then. Try to narrow it down and see what the voter, uh, registration board, what?
Well.
Is that what they call it?
Right, whatever they, they're called. Let me ask this question as you all are, are looking through these.
Election board.
Um, just for conversation's sake. Um. Because that, that was what I was trying to figure out, dude, do we want to look at the three, um, with the least deviation? The bottom, the top three with the least deviation, I'm trying to say that correctly versus all eight. Um, and trying to get some, some clarity, um, Councilman Matt?
Uh, yeah, apologize for being late. My boss kept talking, um. But I guess the, the first question, and maybe I missed it, uh, because you said you guys talked about the prison population. The prison population has been included in all of our maps for. Probably all of my lifetime. Is there a relevant reason why that is desired to be taken out?
So before you get on, I had her kind of talk about it. So what, what has happened previously is that in congressional districts. And, and we didn't even talk about rural areas, but, um, that population would help bolster. It more from a, um, federal state. Version versus not, I guess, at the local levels, um, cities like Terre Haute, she mentioned several cities. They have begun removing those because it doesn't give equal. Access for voters to have representation in the sense that, so for instance. All of these wars have five thousand people and it yours has three. If you take all the prisoners out, you don't have, you have maybe almost three thousand people.
Right.
In your ward and, and they can't vote, they can't. They don't have a voice, they don't have anything. So now you're representing, you have equal rights for a smaller population. Than the rest of the city. I don't know how else I'm saying that if.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's factually what it is.
Right.
Redistricting nationwide, countywide, citywide, and, and a lot of things, and, and maybe it's a good thing that we don't have such. Demographic, uh. Power struggles, uh, dividing the west side and the east side and across the tracks and the blacks and the whites and the Mexicans here. So. The, there's definitely drawing the lines and taking them in or out, but my, my question still remains. The impetus for changing lines from what they are, are, is there an advantage to, uh. Making a change to something that has been acceptable. Uh, to our voters and our people for all of this time, because we do have a prison here and to just, you know, to pull them out. Um, to be similar to other wards when there's.
To be.
I'm just thinking, uh, but it is equal because they're part of the population legally, they've always been part of the place. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't do it. I'm just trying to think of, uh, not just from a deviation point of view. Cause the deviation numbers were decent with our current setup.
No, we're out of whack now.
Well, yeah, but it's simple, a couple of, with, without the prison.
Right.
Who's taking them out? Is that a law that we have to take them out?
No, there's no law. No, that's up to the council.
Right, so the, the impetus and desire to take, I, I just want to know where the, where the idea came from and is there any. Real demographic or shifts. In voting results that come from, uh, you know, cause there, the, 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 our, our. State rep representative maps took a nice chunk of, uh. South Bend and a piece of Michigan City and divided it up differently. And when gerrymandering is the word that's used in larger, uh, contexts, the reasons that these lines are moved. Are for political purposes. Um, and if we're not moving them for any political purpose, except for mathematical equation that's been acceptable. For all these years before us, but we've got a new math. I just would like to kind of comprehend. Yeah, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
So if I can speak to that, um, it, this really isn't for political purposes. The, the idea is to equalize the population based upon census data so that you have. An accurate representative form of government, um, that's, that's represented by wards in this instance. And other communities are called something else, but by wards, and that's really the only purpose. There are some political consequences to it, but the motivation, the motivation shouldn't be political. It should strictly be. We want to have a form of government that's representative. And the easiest way and fairest way to do that is to make sure that the population in each of the wards are equal. I agree, there isn't any requirement that, um, that you don't count the prison population. But that came, um, to us in terms of an option. Ms. Kaufman said, hey, some communities. Um, do count the prison population and some don't. But for purposes of, um, what you all do in provide, helping to provide. City services along with the administration, the numbers are skewed because that, that prison population isn't. Reaping the benefit of any of the city services that you're providing. So whenever you're analyzing anything for decision-making purposes. You want to have a real number of the people who are actually impacted by it. Those people in the prison aren't impacted, um, in any way by the decisions that you're making. Cause they're not part of, a regular part of society, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, now, and I'm, oh, and I'm still understanding that, you know, from just the math and, um. But it's, it's, it's been this way for quite some time and, uh. And the, the relevant reason that's going to impact voters and impact, uh. The prisoners themselves, because there's a reason that they are included in the, in the population, because they are eligible voters, right?
No.
No. Why so, wow.
Yeah, they don't, they don't vote.
It's just a.
No, they cannot vote. They're not voters, they're.
In Indiana, they, they don't have the ability to. It's just jail. You can go to the jail.
So, so, and that's what Ms. Kaufman said, that the trend has been that city, local municipalities. Have been become pulling those out. So it's just a trend that's been occurring because there's nothing that we do from a funding standpoint. Or anything that impact, that population doesn't impact us. So that was the only reason why, um, those options were given to us. There is an option with the prison population in it. But again, it, it, you would be what the third word would have.
Yeah, we'd be continuing the process and practices that we've had. For.
Forever.
Forever. And I guess that's the, the main emphasis to change is the, the, I'm trying to get my reason around that, you know, is there an advantage or? Disadvantage other than just saying, you know, it sounds better, it looks better. And I, and I think Mr. Mayor had.
It's more equal, the way he presented. Yes, yes, um, Mayor Perry, you, yes, you went through this.
Thank you.
You were here too for that.
I've got a few questions for Ms. Kaufman, and then I'd like to relate to you. Uh, what we did in two thousand twelve, our rationale. Ms. Kaufman, how do you feel you were able to accurately state the population of each precinct? And ward when the census tracts don't, do not coincide at all with the political boundaries?
Up, you're on mute.
Every precinct is required to consist of whole census blocks. So, um, there could be questions about whether the census is accurate. But in fact, the census, um, blocks do conform to precincts. Um, and our, our maps, um, are very carefully drawn so that they never cross. Ac- across a, a pre, a, I'm sorry, a census block. That's the one hard and fast rule with redistricting is that. Uh, a line can never cross a census block, but so the, the way that we're able to create the maps. Um, is we initially looked at what precincts are in which, um, council districts and we, and the census provides. Population by precinct, um, and then we have maps that show every, every census block and the population of every census block. And so we create the maps using the census block maps.
I understand that.
Can you explain one thing though, so that people, people may not understand that there's a difference between census tract? And census block. The census blocks are more concise and compact than the census tract. So can you explain it? Because I think.
Census tracts are made up of census blocks.
Yes.
In the census tracts, the boundaries do not follow the political boundaries at all. They cross each other. Constantly.
And she didn't use the tracts.
Okay.
She only used the blocks.
What we did in two thousand twelve and Councilman Don Prisobinski probably remembers this, because we did it together. We took, since, since there was a difference between the census drawings and the political boundaries. We took the voting records and added those up for all of the precincts in Michigan City. And it gave us a total of basically adults eighteen and over. Because the census takes in everybody. And then we divided that total by the number of wards, which is six, and that gave us an average. And then we went back to each ward and compared it to that average. In two thousand twelve, we had the first ward was twenty percent low, below the average. It was decimated by blue chip, development of blue chip and other things. And the fourth ward, because Michigan City had developed to the south, was fifteen percent high. Now, using that same rationale, I have both the, the voting records of two thousand. And again, since we're redistricting in two thousand twenty-two and the census was taken in two thousand twenty. You have a delta in the census that we did also. You have a delta in the census that we did also, because the census was in twenty ten and we redistricted in twenty twelve. So I took the voting records for twenty twelve. And compared them to the voting records for twenty twenty-two, and I found about a nine hundred person increase in Michigan City. Now, when I did that by the same method with what we're doing, dealing with today. The all of the precincts from Michigan City, I found the first ward was eighteen percent over the average. And the and the sixth ward was about eighteen percent over the average. Now, we when in two thousand twelve, we left the prison in. Because at that they we discussed it and we voted on it, but at that time in. Where's it? Where's the federal prison at? Terre Haute. In Terre Haute. And that they were just redistricting and they made an attempt to take the prison out and it resulted in a lawsuit. So we decided to leave that in. That's why we decided. But that's what we we did in two thousand twelve. We just took it strictly on a politic on. We we maintain the political boundaries. And we move, we were, we were advised that we had to be within ten percent of the average. They would like us to be within five percent. But we were not to the we were not to subdivide a precinct unless it was absolutely necessary. And so that's what we did. We moved the fourth precinct. Or the third precinct of the fourth ward into the fifth ward, and we moved the first precinct to the fifth ward into the first ward and we were done. And and Ward three remained well below the average. Uh and we just left it there and with with the prison population in, then all six wards were within a ten percent.
So that seems like, so wow, that that process feel, this was strictly. Done by census. That seems more political, though, to do it by voting records. Because it's based on population and representation of.
We didn't do it by voting records. We just did the total number of of voters. Uh not voting records.
Well, no, but voters, I'm saying even with voters, but the. Family for everybody, not just the voters. Yeah, did you you have a comment? Are you uh? You're muted.
Oh, I I and you're talking to me?
Yeah, I didn't know if you had a comment.
Okay, great. Yes, I do, actually. So courts have been quite explicit. That you cannot use voter registration or voters or anything like that. You can't use household. The only thing you can use is the census data. Um and so if that's what you did in two thousand and twelve. Um then it it would have been wrong if you were, and I'm also confused about your notion about voting records because. Um people at the prison wouldn't have voted at all. Um they'd be the the right age, so. Um but they, none of them would have voted, and so that would have dropped the population of. Um Ward three down by half, but the courts have been have been very explicit that you cannot use. Voter registration or who who votes, um you have to just use. Um the census figures and then I I I think.
That's probably where it came from, from all that, from.
Yeah, that that must have happened since two thousand twelve. We didn't pay any attention to voter records. We just the total number, number of voters in each precinct, which which the voting records included. Active voters and inactive voters, but you got a headcount of adults. Which the to me, the main purpose of redistricting is to avoid gerrymandering. That's that's your main group where you're going to have the gerrymandering is is those people who vote.
Yeah.
So that that's just to share that with you. That's that's what.
That's good to know. That's good background, too.
I just wanted to state, if I may, one other thing about the um Terre Haute and um. The lawsuit, it actually wasn't Terre Haute that got sued. It was Vigo County that got sued. Um and Terre Haute's in Vigo County. Um and the result of that lawsuit actually was that the prisoners were not counted. So that that was the court order was that that the prisoners were not counted. So neither Vigo County nor Terre Haute. Um ten years ago and also last year and this year did not count their prisoners.
That's good to know. Thank you. That's good to know. That that helps.
Well, go ahead. If I may. Since we're on a. Short timeframe. I I'm gonna, you know, after looking at everything in front of me here on these maps is that. I am looking at the MC NP one. And. I uh looking at it, it seems the most. Non-disruptive to uh. A lo- a lot of the wards, you know, yeah, we gotta, we gotta have some movement on uh population. But I I think that. It's. And if you look. It only has one precinct that's split. And I think that's the least disruptive if we're gonna do anything in. I think it. I'm just.
Thank you, Paul.
I think that it's. Simple and concise to the problem we have to the issue in front of us.
Yes, MC NP one is the least just disruptive of all of the um maps. MC um and you can take this one. Okay, um yeah, MC NP one has the least change as far as. How the words would be split and how contiguous in the changes. If you look at all the other pages, I have all these deviations and then I have what split and what precinct and the change and all of that. MCP one puts us in a six point one seven deviation, but there's only one um precinct split. But this will probably be the easiest one for the county to deal with, too. Um when you look at it. Yeah, and it's only two hundred and six voters between the high and the low.
Well, and and keep in mind the county has to win whatever it is.
Yeah, whatever we select, the county has to deal with it, so. Yes, Councilman Don.
Yeah, uh Madam Chairman, uh I agree with what. Councilman Paul Purwinski's uh talking about. And you know, if you go from the high to the low. Uh let's see, what is it? First ward, no, fifth ward is the lowest.
Forty-eight thirty-eight.
Yeah, and then five, one forty-four, that's the sixth ward. So that's two hundred and six voters.
That's not much.
Six votes between. Two wards.
That's pretty.
My mind is not a lot. And it kind of evens everything out. And we take the prison out of the whole equation and be done with that. They don't receive well. They don't receive services from us, our decisions. Don't have anything to do with. How they operate and how they live. And, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they should be counted.
So.
In in this.
What I'll do, um because we we can do, um this is only a first reading.
Right.
So um again, you know, review those, we'll we will blow up. And I I suggest that that one, this one, MC NP one. And then the leak, the one with that two point zero six is another one, but there's a lot going on in there. Um but we can um make an amendment. And um if everybody expresses during their comments what they like the best of, just go with that one and call it a day. I mean. I'm not trying to make it cumbersome or or anything, because the the great thing is we had somebody who actually did all the work for us, so. We didn't have to thank you for that. I'm glad that um we finally contacted you. We thought uh we thought it was a scam at first, so.
Well, and then and then the other thing, uh Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, and like Councilman Paul Presbleinsky alluded to, we're not going to be disrupting a lot of voters. And you know how people, how voters can get on election day, they go to one precinct, oh, you're not registered here. You gotta go over to this precinct. And then on the way over to that precinct, I'm not even gonna vote. I don't care. This seems all messed up.
And I think that would be something we need to do, too.
Or they get to the voting place that they voted at for twenty years at ten of six. Now they gotta travel halfway across town to try to get to the voting place by six o'clock. They lock the door and they can't vote. We don't want that to happen.
So we probably need to find out, too. That's why I was asking the process of after we do this. What do we need to do to make sure residents are notified of? What has happened or changed? Uh yes, Attorney Harris.
So we do have to provide a copy of this once it's fully adopted to the county election board. There is an outreach that is done, that's done. Through their office um to inform voters how they've been impacted by the redistricting that was just approved by the city.
And all municipalities have to do this, so, okay. All right, all right, well, that.
Adopted, I can make sure the county has it, but we just have to get there.
Okay.
Before December thirty-first.
Okay, all right, got it. Um any additional questions for Attorney Harris or for Ms. Kaufman? Any additional questions? Yes, yes.
Um, so if any of the council members are. Precinct chairs, we are allowed to vote on this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this has nothing to do, this is strictly about our wards. It has nothing to do with a precinct or anything, none of that, just our wards, yes.
My my question would be to Attorney Harris, is there a way we can get? Uh one of these or all of these maps overlaid on top of the precincts, because what um Mr. Presbleinsky just said is the. Is the real answer to my question. What is the relevant issue other than getting rid of or not getting rid of prison population? I don't see any ethical one way or another, but people's ability to vote in a continuous contiguous place. Is relevant if you got people running around, so that if I could see that overlay.
Yes, we're we're we talked about that a little bit right before we got here, I believe.
Okay.
And we're gonna work with the county G I S to try to get that overlay done. As part of this process, we're just gonna, we only have side by side. Uh but we're gonna work to get that.
Okay, thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
Um, just to inform everybody that uh today, I took it upon myself to. Go to sanitary district to talk to Tony Basil to see what he could do for us.
Okay, good.
And I went home and had to. Take a nap and uh he did call me back and I'm gonna contact him again tomorrow to see what. I'm sure that he can do something.
Yeah, he's good.
Uh get something going on these precincts, and I'd also like to have it. You know, put together where you have your street uh names on there and. You know, it's more informative, so that whatever we adopt will go on record in the clerk's office. People can come and look at it and uh. Even we might, you know, I mean, this is a short timeframe. But uh I I just think that, I think Tony can. Uh put something together for us. They got a lot of information.
He's good. And yes, did you, um Ms. Kaufman, did you um have an opportunity to talk to Tony Basil? Did you work with him or was it somebody in the county?
Uh it was somebody at the J I S center for the county that that I worked with and.
Okay.
I think it more I've thought about the question, I think we can probably do the the overlay.
Um, okay.
And and I I heard one of the questions had to do with the with the um street boundaries, so. Ex- except where you see um the blow up or when when there's a a precinct split. And that's included with with, I think, with the maps. Um that the precinct boundaries then are the same as they are right now. But but we will um we'll we'll figure out tonight whether or not we can do the overlay. If it might actually help if if you narrowed down um the number of maps. That you need, like if you like chose. Four of them.
Okay.
By the end of the evening, um that that would be a help, but if if not, we'll try to do them all.
No, we'll 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 narrow narrow them down to a couple. I know MC NP one is one of them. For sure. That has the least uh number of splits and changes to any of the uh. The precincts and and. The adjacency of of all the different wards. So that that definitely is one of them, because when you look at some of the other ones, you got a list of one, two, three, four. You got a lot of things going on that precincts are divided by different streets. And that can be confusing. Um, so it looks like the ones with the higher deviation are the ones that have the least uh resistance. So, um, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. So the MC NP one um is probably the one that doesn't have as much change. When you all look at it.
Lose downtown, yeah.
Yeah. So MC NP one for sure. Um and uh as you guys are looking through the rest of these. Um is there anything else that catches your eye? Because there are some definite splits in all of the. Uh MCP two, it shows five pre pre five split precincts. Um MC MP three, it has two precincts split. That's not that bad. Uh in MC MP four has four precincts that are split. MC MP five has three precincts that are split. Four, five, five. So the only other one that has um but changes dramatically is MC MP three. It only has two precinct splits. But. The first, the third ward looks dramatically different. It's the whole, it changes everything. Yeah. Yeah, so it gives us a lot to think about, um but I want to make sure that you all um had an opportunity to ask questions. I will um make sure that you all have Ms. Kaufman's email address. It i- if you could, if you're gonna send a note, if you could copy all the council people so we could see that, the question, that might be helpful. Um, because right now she's just been funneling, you know, sending things to me, but I want to make sure that if you all have um. Questions or anything that you can get them answered or funnel them through um Attorney um Harris. Um with that being said, if you don't have any more questions for her, um we will adjourn. Um this is strictly informational. Um so that we can get this done before the end of the year. So thank you all for attending.